The meeting will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Chair Jean Enright.
Present.
Vice Chair Mike Wayne Richards.
Present.
Secretary Treasurer DeAndre Poole.
Present.
Commissioner Blair Siklin.
Here.
Commissioner Barisa Laldas.
Present.
And Secretary Director Michael Meekins.
Present.
Port Council Joan Fumero.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Please as all stand again for the Pledge Allegiance of the Program. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, just, and just as for all. Please be seated. Are there any additions, deletions, or reorganization of our agenda? Mr. Meekins?
There are none.
Okay. Approver of the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Approver of the minutes?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Mr. Meekins? Now let's start with presentations. Before we get started, I would like to first acknowledge. Where are you? Commissioner Doug Lawson, who is the Chair of the City of Riviera Beach, City Council, he's here today. And thank you for attending our meeting. If you have a word or two, come on up and tell us something.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
This team commissioners, it's an honor to be here today. Chairwoman Dr. Enright, you're doing a phenomenal job. Vice Chair, greetings to our Executive Director. My name is Councilman Douglas Lawson. I'm the Board Chair from the City of Riviera Beach. And I'm just here to give greetings from the City of Riviera Beach, to tell about the amazing progress and steps that our city is taking, and to see how we can continue to build this relationship. Recently, our city manager sent a letter over to the Commissioners and also to the City Executive Director to just discuss how we can actually foster a stronger relationship with the city. Currently, we're doing amazing projects right here in our Marina, which is adjacent to the port. We partnered recently with Margaritaville. We've partnered with their Compass Brands. We've partnered with related group, local and national developers. What they're doing is they're allowing for spurred growth, economic development, and housing, and addressing some of the crises that we've seen throughout our city. We need our partners at the port. So we're just asking for your support. We're asking for your continued push to help build, foster, and grow our city. So one of the key mutual concerns that we both have is the development of this Marina. Doing it cohesively, working together to do that. So I think that we need to discuss that, open dialogue, and figure out what it is that we as a city need to do a better job with, and what the port can do to make sure that our residents are benefiting the most. I know the bottom line within business and government I've seen is ultimately the dollar. But our residents are impacted by every decision we make. So I want to make sure that we're actually doing that together. So if you guys have any questions for me, some of the amazing growth, Dr. Enright, I know some of your concerns and thoughts were about what are we doing at our Marina? It's about building a proper process of growth, which is housing, which is the Marina, which is the hotel, which is the tourism component, but then also making sure that our partners to the south of us are working hand in hand. So the things that you have in mind and things that we have in mind are identical. So it's just making sure it's done properly. Okay? So ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Thank you for the time today. If you have any questions for me, I'd love to answer them. And if we can't set up a meeting in the very near future, whether it's a joint meeting or it's just a discussion with our executive team, then we'd love to kind of move forward with that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The things that are happening in the city are literally mind blowing, and I don't think we all fully understand what's happening around us. So whether that's a joint meeting or a meeting with staff, and staff can then come back, we need to see what's happening. The city's taking off, and we're on the southern edge. We need to see it and be part of it and be active.
Right. I know one way is, I know that if you live in the area, you can watch Channel 13, and I normally watch Channel 13 to see what's going on.
Yes.
And they have, they have presentations in the council. Then I know the attorneys there explain all the aspects. So that is one way that we can really get up to date with the cities, just watch Channel 13 during their meetings on Wednesday nights.
Excellent.
But good idea. Thank you.
Definitely. Our comprehensive plan, our joint plan in the growth of the city, we want to be hand in hand. So working as good stewards, good partners. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today. You guys can always reach me. I want to introduce my new legislative aide. My previous legislative aide left for Cincinnati. He's actually serving as the Assistant to the City Manager now. He served with me for four years, and now I've brought in Danielle Sullivan. So she'll be my point of contact for anything that you guys need, and also you can always call me directly. So thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And also, Mr. Meekins, you can just continue to sit for a little while. Our County Commissioner, Commissioner for District Seven, Commissioner Mac Bernard is in the audience, and I would love for you to say something, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Mac Bernard, County Commissioner for District Seven. It's great to see you Chair Enright and the entire Port Commission. Today, you're going to decide on the item, the presentations, item F2. And you get a chance to hear three different presentations. And as a Commissioner who was born in Haiti and who came to the United States when I was young, I know that this item is really important to not just the Haitian community here in Palm Beach County, but the Haitian community in Haiti, because Haiti truly, truly needs the Port of Palm Beach. As you know, that although there are unrest in Haiti, but commerce continues to thrive in Haiti, and there are over 13 million people who are Haitian who needs the Port of Palm Beach, your decisions today will, of course, continue to provide jobs and opportunities for residents in Palm Beach County and also. And so now, seeing that you get a chance to make this decision, I look forward to hearing the presentations and, you know, to hear who's going to be the best person who would provide that opportunity for not just Haiti, but also the Haitian community. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Meekins?
We'll see if we'll get the air functioning again in here, and hopefully the TVs. Right now, we have two separate presentations. We have first, I'd like to listen to a presentation by Otis Anderson, Chief Executive Officer of the Otis OJ Anderson Scholarship Foundation. Sir?
I haven't seen him in years. I do not.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Otis OJ Anderson, former University of Miami graduate and former St. Louis Cardinal football player and world champion New York Giants. I'm here to say to the board, thank you guys for your continual donations to my charity. There's a lot of charity that you guys could have donated to, but you guys chose my charity as one of the ones to receive. My charity gives kids an opportunity to go to school who fall short in funds. I've been doing it for over 15 years here in Palm Beach County. I am from West Palm Beach.
Yes.
As I said, I went to Forest Hill High School and down to Miami. So my whole foundation is about changing, making kids' life different. I grew up in the projects of Dunbar Village, and I had some people like Dan Callaway in my life to make a difference. Mr. McCray in my life made a difference and said to me that you can be whatever you want to be. And I just want to give kids that same opportunity that I was given. So I just appreciate you guys, what you're doing. I have here my board members. This gentleman right here, Mr. Preston, is from Boynton Beach, where Boynton Beach stepped up to the plate, and it offered their golf course to me to have my first annual golf tournament down in Boynton Beach, the Lincoln Boynton. You know, even though I'm from West Palm Beach, Boynton stepped up. I'm just saying. But and it's just been a good relationship with them. My niece, Takaria, which sitting back there is the president of this whole thing, she's made it all possible. And I just happened to be in town promoting the golf event, and my, and told about the meeting. I was like, well, if I could come and just thank her. She said, well, we'll try. So that's one of the reasons I'm here. But I'd like to my board member to say just why we do what we do and why they got involved with it. This guy Howard Muggley, he's from New Jersey. He come all the way down here to support me and this New, and the West Palm Beach golf program.
Right there. A month and a half ago, we handed 25 seat graduating senior scholarships so they can go on. We want to build that program here. We haven't had a golf outing yet, so this is our first year. Thank you for helping us get it off the ground. It's super important, but there's a lot of charities you donate to, and sometimes you don't actually see the benefit of it. But when you come to an event and you see a kid get a scholarship, cry, or his parents or her parents, that's the impact. That's what we want to do. And we've been fortunate enough, in terms of ten years, probably, oh my God, I have three, 400 scholarships. So it's been amazing. Hopefully, we build it here with all of you, and thank you. I'm going to let Bo speak. He's vocal. I'm not, obviously, from here. Thanks for the weather, by the way. We heard about the slow down weather. So we're here to enjoy it. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Bo Preston. I'm a PJ professional, and Otis and I have been friends for over 18 years. He's spoke so many times about the foundation, and I'm back putting on board. The golf tournament that Howard mentioned, I said to Howard, why can't we do one locally down in Harlem Town? So we put it together. Otis said, just give me 10 groups, and we'll see what we can do and build from there. With your help and others supporting it, we now have 24 groups that have signed up for the event this Saturday. We have all sorts of different sponsors coming in, golf sponsors coming in. It's amazing. I've been up in New Jersey for the last two tournaments. It's amazing what these kids, how appreciative those kids are, and the success down here that OJ has given to his kids down here. I think it's 250 scholarships this, down here locally, over $160,000 scholarships. So because of your support and your backing and support of the community, we're doing great things, OJ doing great things for the kids locally. And I'm excited to see how many, how many scholarships we can give back, how many dollars we can raise for those scholarships. The kids do need it, especially in today's time. So if anybody's interested in playing the golf tournament, it's still Saturday, you got a chance. Takaria has some information, but we'd love to have you down there. It's going to be a great time, and it's eight thirty in the morning, so it's not too early. It is Saturday, so we'd love to have you come down there and support his kids, support OJ's organization, and thank you very much for giving your time.
Just as important, sorry, if you know of anybody that would benefit from a scholarship, please reach out to Takaria. We need it, everybody. But it's super important that with friends and people like you, we can give more to you. If you know of anybody, please ask them.
It's all about Palm Beach County. So anyone in Palm Beach County have kids that's going to be a senior coming out? I think the applications go out in January? January. It's be on the OJ Anderson Scholarship Foundation website, so you better find it there. And again, pardon our dress, because we were at the golf course today. Today was a program for veterans called Hope.
PJ.
PJ Hope. And I was one of the speakers there today, so I mean, I had to look at attire, you know?
You look great.
So again, forgive me for, you know, not being fully, but I just wanted to come and say thank you in person.
Yeah.
And you guys are doing a great job and continuing the great work you're doing. And to all you guys, thank you for giving them that.
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Anderson? Hold on. He wants to say one of our commissioners.
I just want to say a lot of great people have come out of Dunbar Village. And so thank you so much for all that you do and all that you've done. You have served as a role model for so many, and with your organization, continued success.
Appreciate it.
And on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we all want to tell you, thank you so much for just stopping by. But I have something personal to ask you. Your mom lived on East Circle South with a big dog.
Yeah.
That was your dog?
Yeah, it was a great day.
It's tall.
It was a great day.
Yeah, it's tall.
Actually, one of my teammates out of St. Louis, Roy Green, David Damian.
Right.
You know?
He used to walk the dog every morning across near my mom's house.
Yes, right. She sure did. Thank you for that, yes.
That was Mother Emma Anderson.
That's right. How you know that? Again, I again want to take more of your time, but we really appreciate that.
But thank you so much. Now you can't get out, so you stuck with us.
That's okay. Well, we'll hang out. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Meekins, I need to just, just one more second. Give me one more second. I want to acknowledge Mr. Edwin Ferguson, our School Board Member for District Seven. I don't know where all you folks are coming from, but thank you for visiting us. Stand up, let us see you. You have a word to say? You would like to say a word right quick for us? Thank you for visiting the Port of Palm Beach. He is the School Board Member for District Seven, which is parts of Riviera Beach, West Palm Beach.
I really just stopped by to, just to sit in on the Port of Palm Beach meeting. I've been intending to come for quite some time now, and got a little wet, but I'm happy to be here. I'm the School Board Member for District Seven. Commissioner Enright, thank you for giving me the chance to speak. We're having a town hall at Roseville Middle School next Wednesday, 23rd, August 23rd at 6:00 PM. So persons are interested in the status of the renovations of that school. I know a lot of you all have ties to the West Palm Beach area. You're welcome to come. Superintendent Burke will be there. Chief Operating Officer Joe Sanchez will be there as well. But I'm just here really just to attend, but I appreciate the opportunity to go ahead and read the audience.
Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Meekins, you have the floor.
Hey, Jean, where do you go?
Oh, hold on.
I'm the OJ Anderson.
Yes.
I think some of us have very little money left. Some of us have more, we only have a month to go. So if anyone has some extra funding to put, because I think we were trying to get it up to $1,000.
How far did it go?
Six fifty.
Do we have the numbers?
I don't have any money.
It's okay. We'll try.
Okay, I have the balances for each of you. Commissioner Siklin has 350. Commissioner Barisa Laldas has 1,730. And Commissioner Poole, 990. And Commissioner Richards, 400.
And Commissioner Enright, zero.
And Commissioner Enright, zero.
And that does not roll over, so.
Right, it does not.
And we're at August now?
If some of you will be willing to make.
I'll go ahead and make a $400 donation. Thank you.
Now, you can't use your balance because it's not going to roll over unless you have something to spend in next week or two.
I wanted to talk, I wanted to talk to you guys. There were two others that I had wanted to, but I'm very happy to support this one.
And please put Commissioner Richards down for 200 as well. Thank you.
Do you have a thousand?
No, we're only 300, so.
Yeah, we're only 200.
Is a thousand the limit, Jean?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, good.
Twelve hundred? Okay.
All right, let's keep it going.
I just wanted to also add that I do believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but one of our interns also got a scholarship this year.
Yes.
Christian Williams also got a scholarship this year. So very worthy.
Okay. The floor is yours, sir.
Okay. So for our next presentation, we have presentations for the respondents, for the request for proposal, for the award of the RFP 02 2023B. So right at this point, what we'd like to do is have the companies come up one at a time, give the presentations to the Commissioners with your approval. We have the first company, Gemini Products, ready to come up and give their presentation.
How long is it again?
10 minutes per company.
Do we, where do we have the criteria that they are to be evaluated?
So staff went ahead and did the initial criteria evaluation. They wrote a summary for you. It's in your summary.
Right.
And that should be right into your package.
Do you have the package of each individual person?
Yes.
I'm going to see it.
Yeah. But I do think we should at least have the criteria so that.
Yeah, it's on the ranking as well. And my apologies, we have Gemini up there, but Emerge is going to be the first company that's.
But before they come in, I know the ranking is here, but if the board wishes to rank as well, they would need the criteria.
What he's saying is that if we had all the criteria listed, and then each company who submitted their application, criteria one, what it is, and their qualifications for this, criteria two, what the criteria is, and then list their attributes if they, where they fall in that particular race. That's what they're asking for. Can you get that to us right quick?
So through the RFP process, we sent a copy of all the RFP responses, which had all the criteria for everything through the whole process. Staff went ahead and evaluated that process of the return answers from the RFP, and that's where they came up with the summary.
Right, but what we're saying is.
If I could just add, so staff pursuant to the solicitation has already ranked the firms. I think what Mr. Richards is saying is, if the commission, after hearing the whole presentations, is wanting to re-rank the firms, then you would be applying the same criteria that the staff, the selection committee did.
Well, yeah, the RFP says selection will be by the Board of Port Commissioners at a public meeting, and it does say that staff will rank. But if we're going to actually make this selection.
We need to see.
We need to see what are the four, five, six, seven bullet points. That should be able, you could print that out, and we can.
So she's going to get them, hopefully.
Yeah, we could.
And ask me if she can just give all of us a copy.
She's going to print it out. If you could throw Emerge up, they're going to be the first company.
She's going to get them, because I understand what you're saying. We need to know if they.
So we'll do it, vertical.
We don't have.
No, no, wait. All right, wait while she's doing that.
Okay, well, since we're waiting on her, you know what we can do? We can continue with the meeting and go to another area. Okay, we'll just put a tap in that.
Do we need a motion to reorder, or just?
Motion to reorder, if possible.
Move to reorder and continue while we wait for that data.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, let's go to G1.
That's consent, Jean.
Oh, that's a consent. I'm sorry. I am. District reports, Mr. Meekins?
Madam Chair, normally you would ask, are there any items that need to be removed instead of not you to?
Well, we all have to do that.
Have we approved consent yet?
No.
Yes, Jean.
Right, if you want to go ahead and approve consent now, we can move on to District Reports.
Consent agenda, I need an approval.
Move to approve the consent agenda as prepared.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Now let's proceed. Executive Directors' Report.
Okay, we're set. All right, Commissioners, cargo numbers year to date through May 2023, tonnage is As you can see, TEUs are 185,363. Cruise numbers year to date, passengers are 262,777. We held our master plan, we held our last public meeting on the draft master plan on June 27th at the Riviera Beach Marina. It was well attended. The PID project remains on schedule August 25th. We should have the RFP responses back from that. I also wanted to add into there that the elevator modernization is out on the street, and we expect the responses back from that August 30th, with the hope that sometime in October, November timeframe, we actually have someone out there working on our elevators starting to modernize. Lord knows after the lightning here this afternoon, they may need to be here a little quicker. I attended the Port of Ports Council Annual Conference in Fort Lauderdale, August 1st through August 3rd. It was a very productive meeting for all of the ports, a lot of great subjects, a lot to come back with, and a lot of work to do. We also held an employee barbecue appreciation lunch on Friday, July 21st inside of Berth One. Great thanks to them for actually allowing us to utilize their space. It did give us a nice cool space to cool off while we're out there. If I can, if I can introduce our newest employee, Ayesha Campbell. She is our Records Retention Specialist. Ayesha? I told her she had a three-minute speech, and it's, but she's okay. We were supposed to meet with the Riviera Chief of Police on August 16th. He had a conflict and had to cancel again, so we'll reschedule that moving forward. On the last day of our summer intern shirt program, we hosted an ice cream social for our summer interns. All 10 of them were awarded certificates of completion for their hard work and dedication. I'm proud to report that received very positive feedback from the program. The interns also wrote letters to the tenants who sponsored the program, and they were letters of thank you. I can't thank Yeremy again for all the hard work she put into that. Really, it was a task, especially given some of the other things we had going on at the board at that time. The rest of the staff as well did just tremendously.
Madam Chair?
Staff did a, Ms. Meekins, you and your staff did a phenomenal job. Those youngsters are brilliant. They're enthusiastic. They're very helpful, and your staff rose to the occasion, so that was a wonderful project. Thank you.
I can tell you that, you know, I think all of staff went away, you know, when you start a project like that, sometime when you have a lot going on, it can seem quite burdensome. However, by the second week, we were involved with the interns, I think all of us just had a smile on our face from ear to ear. We had a lot of fun with them, and as you said, they were very productive and helped us tremendously during a time when we could use it.
Good.
We conducted the first public hearing for the 2014 tariff on Wednesday, July 26th, and we held the second on August 9th. That will be coming to you, to the board in September. This summer, we hosted our first annual sponsor classroom to support local teachers and students as they head back to school. Thanks to the generosity of our businesses partners, including SSI Petroleum, C-Mix, Heavy Lift Services, Emerge Cargo, and Florida Crystals, we were able to distribute more than $3,500 worth of supplies to all of the Riviera Beach Elementary Schools. Really happy about that. On July 27th, it marked the grand opening of the state-of-the-art cement dome terminal operated by Ozinga. Chairwoman Dr. Jean Enright gave a few words about the ribbon-cutting ceremony that was attended by elected officials from the city, county, and from the state. And last but not least, Tropical Shipping proudly celebrated 60 years of service to the Bahamas and the Caribbean with an employee luncheon for their employees at the Port of Palm Beach. They also held one at their Miami facility on August 3rd. Since 1963, Tropical has continued to grow, now serve locations spanning from Canada to South America. They have provided reliable shipping and built lasting partnerships with their customers. I didn't get to attend that one, but I heard it was very good.
Good for best food in the world.
And finally, to close us out, AAPA, FPC, and other scheduled events, we have FPC IANA Intermodal Expo, and that is in Long Beach, California. We have Break Bulk Americas, and that is in Houston, Texas. We have AAPA Annual Convention, and that is in Aurora, Colorado, kind of a weird place for AAPA. FPC, and that'll be with the Florida Chamber Annual Meeting and Future Florida Forum, and that's in Orlando. And then Latin American Convention of Ports, and I'm going to have Jackie pronounce that for me again, or I'm going to mess it up again? Thank you very much. That is my report.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Any questions, Commissioners? Thank you very much. Mr. Pinsky?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Richard Pinsky and Carl has my slide. Oh, look away for a minute, and there it is. Good job. So earlier this week, they made, the Florida Legislature, House and Senate made some changes to their meeting schedule. Little known factoid, but the Senate is actually changing out all of their windows, so they can't meet when the House is gonna meet, so they're doing two separate committee weeks. But this is the time, as you know, when bills start getting heard, appropriation projects start getting heard, et cetera. So it's gonna be an active fall leading up to the start of session. Next slide, please. And the regular session's gonna begin on January 9th, so start making your plans now. Session's gonna end on March 8th. Palm Beach County Day is gonna be January 10th, and last year, we did have some, some attendance from a few of the port commissioners, and hopefully we'll be able to do that again with Port Director Meekins. And, and then on September 26th, of note, I think you got an email from Yeremy that the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation's actually gonna come to the port and take a tour. And that will include some of the onsite tenants that we have to see the operations, and also to, to meet on the Margaritaville cruise ship for lunch, hear a briefing, and it's been, as you know, probably before COVID, since the last time that we've had all the legislators and their staff here. So we're excited about that, and, and as you know, they, they were instrumental, the legislative delegation, particularly our House sponsor, Representative Catherine Waldron, in securing the $500,000 that we got this past session. So that's it. I just want to let you know that the dates, things are heating up, and those of you that may want to travel to Tallahassee, I wanted to make sure that you're aware of the dates.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
You mentioned about $500,000. Do we have, do we have a plans for where, where that's going, or what, where is that?
So the $500,000 has to go towards the land purchase.
Okay.
We have a partial block of, that we have purchased, and we go in that same block area to continue to purchase that, that property, I see.
And do we have a?
Time limit on that or anything?
It's June.
Yeah, June 30th.
Oh.
Spend it quick?
Yeah.
All right.
We.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mike? We are also giving 900, what is it, $990,000? State Representative Mike Russo gave us $990,000, is that right? 990?
Yeah, he's committed.
Committed, $990,000 to the Port of Palm Beach.
An additional project that the port may have in the future of extending a baggage area and additional seating for our terminal. He actually said a million, and then he came back and said, no, 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 you asked for 990,000.
Right. That was very generous of him.
We're working on that now. We have an economic impact study being done by John Martin. I didn't charge this whole lot of money, about $6,000. That has to be completed by the end of the month, and that's part of a bigger ask from Fsted, that they're looking for big projects in 2025 to fund. And that is what they were asked for by the state government. So we're working through that process. Carl's helping me with that.
And we were very fortunate, he was very generous just to, to get the funds for us.
Absolutely.
Um, that's. Commissioner, Commissioner, what did you say?
If you want to take the pause now and go back to F2, it's up to you, or we can continue?
My report, sir.
Let's do the Commissioner reports, and then we just.
Absolutely.
Do you have any report?
So we had a BDB breakfast this morning, which was wonderful. County Administrator Verdinia Baker, she, she gave us a quick summary on improvements that we're making throughout the county. One of the things I'm very excited about is we're actually building a homeless housement facility on Lake Worth, so we'll be relocating the individuals that are currently at the fairgrounds to this area. And then she spoke about the need for, for us to really economically grow in Palm Beach County. A great need is to be able to increase our airport volume, so increase the amount of individuals that can have direct flights to Palm Beach County, and that's something that they're, they're working on.
Thank you, Commissioner Richards.
I have nothing at this point.
I have nothing. Commissioner, approve.
Just very briefly, that the TPA met today, it was just a workshop on the federal performance measures and targets. So it's a presentation from FDOT, as well as others, that gave an overview of federal regulations. Some members have, we want to make sure that safety measures on, in Palm Beach County are aligned with state, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're doing as much as we can in Palm Beach County to ensure the safety of our roadways, bridges, sidewalks for all citizens of Palm Beach County.
Thank you, Commissioner Sicklin.
Nothing.
Okay. Go on, Mr. Meekins.
John, you want to?
Mr. Ferro. You okay?
Good.
Okay. I guess we will start the presentations. I guess they had to pull the, pull their names out of a hat to decide who goes first, second, or third, so.
The first company you'll see is Emerge.
Right.
There are also the companies that are out there working with the port on cleaning it up during this process.
What did you just say? Will you say that a little louder, so we can hear?
I apologize. There are also the company who's been out there cleaning up for us, getting ready for the auction, so on and so forth.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Commissioners, Madam Chair, how are you?
Thank you.
My name is RJ Blackham with Emerge Cargo Solutions. Like Mr. Meekins just stated, we are currently in the middle of cleaning up the remnants of Monarch Enclosures. We were successful in the first half by returning all the cargo to the Haitian-American clients of Monarch. It's about six to eight months last year. This year, August of last year, we created Emerge Cargo Solutions with Stephen Wren Company to come in and assist other companies and help unload their cargo imports. We did break bulk, some bulk, and we're here today to let you know that we want a chance at the RFP, the Annex property, to resume the, the vehicle market for Haiti. Understanding Haiti is, there's a lot going on in Haiti right now, political insecurity. We gotta really measure on how we do this moving forward, be careful at doing it, and build something successful. In the meantime, we're happy to be here with the port, growing with the port in the future, and we hope that you guys will give us the chance to do it. Do you have any questions for us? Mr. Richards?
RJ, thank you for being here. So is good and bad with you being involved with the previous operation? Good, clearly you have history and familiarity. I recall, I received a call from a county commissioner, I don't know, five or six years ago, that county commissioner had received numerous complaints that the customers were being mistreated by the, then, by the operators. I went over there and I witnessed it myself, and I received some of it. I received some myself.
I remember very clearly.
So there is a language barrier to some degree, and there is a cultural familiarity that's important. So what would you and Emerge do to, to understand those differences, and more importantly, respect them and make sure that, that the customers are appreciated, respected, and properly taken care of? Because that can never happen again.
100%. First and foremost, become, would come the respect for the person, an individual, period. It doesn't matter their culture or language barrier differences. As far as, you know, the communication barrier, it's easily solvable. Now, there's plenty of Haitian-Americans here who want a job, who would need a job. We'd be happy to employ those people on administrative level, any level, on any kind of barrier that would be there. As far as facility goes, I know there's an issue with facility and.
Bathroom, exactly.
Stuff like that. Water to drink, shade even, those are the things that would be taken care of. Like you said, the good in the bag, I can say the good thing is, I believe we know a lot of what not to do. We weren't, you know, me personally, I wasn't in control of situations. I wish I would have been. I think it might have had a different outcome, but you know, things were above my head, and I did what I could do in my position. Unfortunately, I couldn't help them when they were on their way out.
Do you have any, it's not a requirement, I'm just, I just want to understand. Do you have any Haitian-Americans in the ownership structure or the upper echelon of the company?
Okay, let's continue. First.
Don't worry.
Are all the three companies, they're inside now? Mr. Meekin? They're all back?
Commissioner, we're back.
I guess it is time for Commission Two to rank the three companies, and. How do you think? Mr. Ferro? John?
Yes, ma'am.
You wanna direct this for me, please? In the ranking?
Well, sure. So go back to something that I think was handed out earlier.
You should have a copy of it now, yes?
Yeah, which is the, the score sheets. The score sheets that were used by the staff selection committee. If you are supportive and validate the selection committee's ranking, 1, 2, and 3, then you could just vote. If you want to, based on your discussions now, deviate from that ranking, then we're gonna need you to score the three proposers using the same categories that the selection committee used, because that was, that was the criteria that was in the solicitation document. We, the port, are gonna grade you on the following items, like for example, financial assurance was 40% of the score. Plan and approach is 30% of the score. Domisal within the Port of Palm Beach was 10%. Cover letter, company information, knowledge, and experience is 20%. So we have to follow those rules that were established in the solicitation.
Madam Chair? We, we have, we were, we were told, and it, and the RFP does say selection will be, I'm reading from the RFP, by the Board of Port Commissioners. So if, what I'm hearing is in order for us to actually have the final say, what I'm hearing from council is that we have to, there are four criteria that are here, and that is incumbent, I mean, it's incumbent, we have to, it's incumbent upon us to fill this, this form out, and then we could rate. That's if you want to ultimately rate them and categorize them. And that's, and I do want to do that. I, I'm not willing to simply close my eyes. We heard presentations for a reason. So I believe, I believe we have a duty to actually fill this form out for each presentation and then submit it, as opposed to simply saying, ah, I take it this staff says. I'm not willing to do that.
Oh, no, 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 no. We've, we've heard the presentations, and you have a good point. After the presentations, we can do it that way, or else we can just rate them just 1, 2, and 3. By the presentations in the classes that we've asked them. We can do it that way also.
Well, the way the, so the solicitation, the RFP.
Right.
It establishes the rules and the criteria. So when it's published, all the proposers, some that didn't propose and others that did propose, so, okay, I'm gonna put a proposal together fashioned after these criteria. So once they submit their proposals, you can't add new criteria, you can't change the criteria, you're bound to what was published as the review criteria, the selection criteria. And so if you today said, for example, their footprint in Haiti is important, well, that's not necessarily in the criteria. Or you'd have to fit it in one of the criteria that's here, the four criteria.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Commissioner.
Commissioner Sicklin, you have any thoughts on this?
No, I mean, I, I think, I mean, I was just planning to pick 1, 2, and 3.
1, 2, that's correct.
So that's what I'm prepared to do, I'm not prepared to do anything else at this time.
I, I'm, I concur with Commissioner Sicklin.
Same here.
Okay, so we're back where we started. So what we will do is complete the form that was given to us, and then sign your name, each Commissioner, 1, 2, and 3. 1 being your first choice, 2 your second choice, and 3 is your third choice, okay? And sign your name to the document, and submit it to our court.
I think, I think somebody stole my, my.
What are you missing?
I, I think I misplaced it.
Just to clarify, Mr. Ferro, 1 is for our first choice, 2, second, third. I just, I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir. And just so that you know, the, the ranking is very important, because we will begin negotiations with the first-ranked firm.
I know.
If they're unable to provide the financial assurances with audit and statements, if we're unable to work out specific terms, then we go to the second choice. Can't work out with the second-ranked firm, then we'll go to the third one.
Thank you, sir. Oh, thank you.
On a good note, the AUC is back.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I'll just make a general statement. I don't want to, I won't get ourselves in trouble. All of the proposals were phenomenal.
Outstanding.
All three were phenomenal. Two of them, oh my gosh, two were neck and neck, and I wish I could wave a wand and have those two, and I'm not saying who they are, I wish those two could combine, because those two blew me away. They really did. I don't know how you feel.
Yeah, I would just add to that, Commissioner Richards, that to see the support in the room tonight, and we all are concerned about Haiti, and want to make sure that they're able to get the goods that they need.
Yes.
And so I think, from our experience and from our short time here, we just want to make sure that whomever it is hits the ground running, and they can, they can go and, and make sure that we continue that relationship with Haiti.
Yeah. I wish those two groups had got in the governor beforehand and merged. Yeah.
And always remember that if we're not able to negotiate with one, with the first group, with the first team, first company, then we will go to the second company.
Absolutely.
So just remember, it's not all over yet, you know, it's not all over, so let's just see what happens. We've only waited five seconds. Don't worry about that. It's not raining, so we have a chance to run home. It's not raining, there's nothing really be. Look at the rain. I think we might have a tie.
No.
We have a tie. We might have a tie. Do we have a tie? There's a tie. There's a tie. There must be a tie. There must be a tie.
You just get clarification from John, someone may have misunderstood the instructions.
Which is, first place is 1, second place is 2, third place is 3.
Somebody may have done that wrong.
The first place is 1, the second place is 2, and the third is 3.
So yeah, let me just be clear. So in the ballot says the proposer with the most number of number-one votes, so I just want to make sure that's how you ranked it, because what I'm seeing here doesn't comport with some of the comments I've heard. So I just want to make sure, you, the firm that you want ranked first, you put a number 1 next to it.
Yes. That's what we did.
Okay.
Hope we didn't make mistakes.
We put a 1 by our first choice.
I think that's what I did.
First choice.
And then.
And 2 by our second choice, and our third choice is 3. So first, second, and third.
I don't know.
Okay, you know what we can do? I can just do it. We, we can, you know what we can do?
Okay, now.
They're good.
There's a little calculating, we're good.
Was it a math problem?
Look, you know what we need to do? Let's just call the roll.
Ansa one, Emerged two, Gemini three.
Commissioner Jean Enright?
Gemini one. Ansa Marine two and Emerged Cargo is three.
Commissioner Barisa Laldas?
Ansa Marine one, Emerged three and Gemini two.
Commissioner DeAndre Poole?
Uh, Ansa one, Emerged two and Gemini three.
Commissioner Wayne Richards?
Gemini number one, Ansa number two, Emerged number three.
Ansa Marine received three votes for number one. Jiminy Products received two votes for number one and Emerged Cargo Solutions didn't receive any votes for number one.
Thank you. So with that being said.
Second.
Yeah, you got it. Number two.
Second company.
The second company, so from the voting, uh, Ansa Marine received three number one votes, Gemini Product Products received two. So we would negotiate the contract with Ansa.
So we need a motion to go into contract.
Again, got to stick to the rules that you announced in the solic- you said you would rank and the way most procurements work is if you're unable to reach an agreement with number one, then you go to number two. That's why you do ranking. Otherwise you'd only pick one firm.
Right.
So I'm going to stretch myself in math here, but the firm that received, uh, there's two firms that received two number two votes. But one of those firms is Ansa. So the next firm is Emerged Cargo based on, I asked a clerk to confirm my math.
Mm-hmm.
So Emerged Cargo would be ranked second.
Hold on.
Explain.
I thought Gemini would be second.
Gemini. Gemini, yeah. Gemini received two number one votes. So if you go by the number one votes, then Gemini will be second because they received two number one votes.
That's correct.
That is correct.
It's correct. So you have Ansa as your number one.
Number one and Gemini will be number two.
Gemini, you're Gemini?
Yep.
Would be number two.
You're right, number two, and I'm sorry, and Emerged, right. I'm just going to read again, the RFP proposer with the most number of number one votes would be considered number one. And then, uh, next, your first choice places number two, right. So then, correct, then Jiminy or Gemini would be second ranked and Emerged would be third.
And Mr. Fumero, Madam Chair?
Yes, go on.
Uh, and are you, are you saying that the RFP specifically said those that have the most number one votes?
No.
No.
No, the, the methodology for the ranking you did today is set forth in the ballot and the, and the board backup. That's what I was reading from. As I explained before, the selection committee ranked based on four criteria.
Right, and we just.
You've decided to do it different.
But this is my question. The, the, the ballot that we have in front of us says after totaling all sheets, the RFP proposer with the most number one votes would be considered number one. My question is, was that in the RFP? Because if a company gets two number one votes and many number two votes, they win. So my question to you is.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Of course, so my question to you is, does the RFP say who gets the most number one votes wins?
No, nor does it say that you will rank. That's what was my beginning comment.
So, but Wayne, I understand what Commissioner Richards is saying. What he's saying is when you look at all the votes and you would combine the number one votes with the number two, the lowest number of votes is the company. Who has the lowest number?
What if the company gets, Madam Chair, what if the company gets two number ones and two number threes?
You could, I mean, there's nothing to limit you to come up with whatever tally approach you want to take. None of this was addressed in the solicitation.
Okay, so, so you, you should, the RFP does not say the most number one.
No, the RFP says the ranking will be done by a staff selection committee.
So if that be the case, what he's saying is that you would add up all the numbers. Am I correct, Commissioner Richards? And if you add up all the numbers and then you have the company with the lowest number, add up all the numbers and see what we have.
That's what, that's what they're doing now. I understand what you're asking for.
I understand what Commissioner Richards is saying.
So she's, she's adding all the numbers now that are going across, all the number ones, all the number twos, all the number threes. Do you have those?
I understand what he's saying.
Do you have?
Read it out. If you do it that way, what do we have?
What are the total numbers for each company?
Total number and the one with the lowest number.
Ansa Marine received six votes. Emerged Cargo Solutions received thirteen points and Jiminy Products Distribution, ten points.
Right, right, that's fine. So it works out. That's fine, we can do everything. Thank you, Commissioner Richards.
So we're looking for a motion to rank the number one company, Ansa, and to allow the port to go into negotiations with that company. And, and if we cannot come to successful negotiations, then we would go with the number two company, Gemini.
How long would the negotiation process be, do you guys think?
Usually it's within a thirty day period that we have that ironed down. And then John does a final review of the contract, so it's within that timeframe. But usually within thirty days, you know whether it's going to work out or not.
I think that's good. You know, in the interest of equity for, if, if we aren't able to hammer out terms, that we have a, we have another qualified entity.
Absolutely.
I need a motion, commissioners?
I have a motion to accept, uh, Mr. Meekin's recommendation. Is that, you can make a motion. My mind is a little bit cloudy.
So again, it's just a motion to rank the number one firm, Ansa, and to go into negotiations for a contract with Ansa. And the number two firm, Gemini, should we not be able to go into successful negotiations with the number one ranked firm? Second.
All in favor, please?
Make a motion? Can you make a motion?
No. He did, I just reiterated the motion.
DeAndre made the motion and then Mr. Meekins, uh, saved the motion. So Commissioner Poole made the motion. It was seconded by Commissioner Sicklin. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much and I, I want to thank all, all three of the companies who came in to give a presentation. You've been, your, your presentations were outstanding and hopefully we will go for it now. Okay. Let's go to, um, old business. I one, Mr. Meekin?
John Fumero to give us a quick, and then I'll, I'll chime in on that as well.
Yeah, there's, uh, with respect to the litigation update, there's not a lot to report in terms of hearings and, and motions and so forth. We have been in communication with defendants and their attorneys and getting documents to complete our investigation and I think Mr. Meekins has something to add to that.
So from the Sheriff's Department at the auction, they're looking at ninety days from August now. Uh, they have a series of things that they have to do on their end. We're pretty much almost ready and on our point. So what we are going to do, resolve occupied part of that area. So we are reshuffling that area so that we can start creating a space assignment on that area and start collecting revenue while we're still waiting on the Sheriff's Department to move forward. That be it, Richard?
Yep.
That's it.
Okay. I two?
I two. It's just, I two is a, requesting a motion to ratify the increased upon company work order from ten thousand to seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-four cents for cathodic protection consulting services. Uh, what they have done is they have finished their design, uh, they were over the original budget. This additional money will close them out and that will be.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries five zero. I three?
I three is a motion to approve the Port of Palm Beach final draft of a strategic master plan which provides recommendation blueprint for the port's sustainability and viability over the next twenty years. I would ask that Kerry come up. He's going to give you a, a presentation and then at that point we'll come back to the motion.
I appreciate the opportunity and thank the board for allowing me to come here today and give you an update on your strategic master plan. Kind of show you the progress that we've gone through since we started this. Kind of started out with the first phase of building the context of the master plan and that kind of brought us into public engagement period number one, where you see in keynote one, we had our first public outreach meeting and started gathering initial input for the master plan. As we went through that, uh, the public engagement period number two, we're starting out and culminating all the stakeholder input and got together, uh, public meeting number two and told the port or told the stakeholders at that point, this is what we heard from you. And we took it from there and kind of progressed into the preparing the recommendation for the master plan. And there was a period there that we were on hold. Uh, the port was going through some changes. They had a new executive director coming in and new Board of Commissioners was coming to part. So we came in, coordinated with that, and then from that point we started putting together with the new project manager for the master plan and new direction for the master plan to prepare the recommendations and get to that piece of it as well, which kind of brought us to the second stage of public engagement period number two, where we presented that recommendations and to the public so they could see it. We're incorporating the final input and then after you adopt the plan, the next stage will go to the Palm Beach County planning for their adoption of the master plan as well. And the key to this is we wanted to say that the master plan's a guide to help yourselves plan for the future of the port. Now, of course, you know the Port District, Port of Palm Beach District's large, comes to about fifty percent of Palm Beach County, but also sits in the heart of one of the fastest growing and most dynamic economies in the U.S. And the Port of Palm Beach is positioned to serve as an important enabler of this regional growth by providing, providing access to key infrastructure and resources that allow its customer base to connect to the global market. Of course, the port leases its acreage and its infrastructure to its tenants to facilitate the diversified cargo movement and cruise passengers. This graphic here shows the distribution of cargo with red being containerized, which is the largest. Blue is dry bulk and the yellow is liquid bulk with general cargo shown in green. And that's how those product, those cargoes are moved currently through the port's leases. We looked at the cargo growth and containerized cargo growth is anticipated to exceed the current lease boundary of the terminal in 2026. You can see this chart shows the historical cargo throughput in blue and looking at turning it into the orange line, which is a growth of about three and a half percent per year. And the dashed line is existing container terminal throughput capacity in its existing operation in tropical ass. Other cargo that we wanted to look at was looking at the throughput of general cargo, dry bulk and liquid bulk, which could get the total throughput to reach five point mil, four million tons over the next twenty years. Of course, the big growth components of that, you can see in the top left chart of the blue is the containerized and in the top right chart, you can see yellow, which is dry bulk, primarily cement. So you saw a lot of growth in C-Mex looking to increase their throughput in 2023 and Ozinga's coming online, also increasing more dry bulk cement coming through the port. And after that, we're looking at about a four percent growth in cement dry bulk. The green represents the sugar and we're looking at that's going to grow at about one point five percent following U.S. consumption. And then we go down to the bottom chart in the bottom right hand corner, that's the liquid bulk. Where the grays and the blacks are the petrochemical, that's going to grow at about roughly one point two percent, matching population growth in the region. And then molasses is going to pay pretty standard, standard current throughput into the future as well. We also wanted to look at the cruise opportunities for growth in the cruise market. And this chart shows a whole lot on it, but pretty much in the right hand, left hand side in light blue was your historical passenger throughput in the cruise industry. Of course, you get to that grayish blue shade, which is COVID and everything dropped, but we're looking at it rebounding, rebounding fairly quickly, starting with about four hundred thousand passengers potentially in 2023 and growing from there at about two percent annually. And with a two percent capture of the market of the Caribbean forecast, that'll then get you up to about seven hundred thousand passengers in the next five to seven years. And that's currently about the capacity of your cruise terminal facility as it sits now in the Port of Palm Beach, although it needs a little bit of improvements in passenger and egress and ingress. This can, short term is considered probably a realistic opportunity. the diversified cargo movement and cruise passengers. This graphic here shows the distribution of cargo with red being containerized, which is the largest. Blue is dry bulk, and the yellow is liquid bulk with general cargo shown in green. And that's how those cargoes are moved currently through the port's leases. We looked at the cargo growth, and containerized cargo growth is anticipated to exceed the current lease boundary of the terminal in 2026. You can see this chart shows the historical cargo throughput in blue and looking at turning it into the orange line, which is a growth of about 3.5% per year. And the dashed line is existing container terminal throughput capacity in its existing operation in Tropical Ass. Other cargo that we wanted to look at was looking at the throughput of general cargo, dry bulk, and liquid bulk, which could get the total throughput to reach 5.4 million tons over the next 20 years. Of course, the big growth components of that, you can see in the top-left chart, of the blue is the containerized. And in the top-right chart, you can see yellow, which is dry bulk, primarily cement. So you saw a lot of growth in C-Mex looking to increase their throughput in 2023, and Ozinga's coming online, also increasing more dry bulk cement coming through the port. And after that, we're looking at about a 4% growth in cement dry bulk. The green represents the sugar, and we're looking at that's going to grow at about 1.5% following U.S. consumption. And then we go down to the bottom chart in the bottom right-hand corner, that's the liquid bulk. Where the grays and the blacks are the petrochemical, that's going to grow at about roughly 1.2% matching population growth in the region. And then molasses is going to pay pretty standard, standard current throughput into the future as well. We also wanted to look at the cruise opportunities for growth in the cruise market. And this chart shows a whole lot on it, but pretty much in the right-hand, left-hand side in light blue was your historical passenger throughput in the cruise industry. Of course, you get to that grayish-blue shade, which is COVID and everything dropped, but we're looking at it rebounding fairly quickly, starting with about 400,000 passengers potentially in 2023 and growing from there at about 2% annually. And with a 2% capture of the market of the Caribbean forecast, that'll then get you up to about 700,000 passengers in the next five to seven years. And that's currently about the capacity of your cruise terminal facility as it sits now in the Port of Palm Beach, although it needs a little bit of improvements in passenger and egress and ingress. This short term is considered probably a realistic opportunity and outlook for your cruise passengers. We also looked at a long-term cruise opportunity, which is farther out there, probably more of a potential and an opportunity with major changes occurring. You can see we're starting with the same throughputs on the left, but it grows quite a bit, increasing the capture of about 3.5% of the Caribbean forecast, which is quite a growth component. And then also, the passenger is growing at about 5.4% annually, so another significant growth pattern. So for you to reach this potential, to achieve over 1.5 million passengers in a year, you're going to need extensive cruise berth and terminal improvements. So we're looking at this as an outlier, an outside goal, and we should say really for the master plan recommendations, the recommendations are tied into the short-term, more realistic goal with this as a opportunity for the future, just to know what they could do if the cruise passengers and the cruise industry moved in this fashion. So the key of the master plan now that we're providing is the recommendations. We've broken the recommendations into these eight different categories. The first is to position the port to accommodate growth of containerized cargo and cruise passengers, and also to accommodate diverse growth and capture of various cargoes that come through the port, have a more diversified portfolio, and be more economically resilient. Want to improve the rail connection to the port and also reduce rail congestion by allowing the switching from working track to storage track to be more efficient. We want to reduce off-terminal and on-terminal roadway congestion. We want to improve the utilization of your existing berths and improve the aging port infrastructure to harden key infrastructure to make your port more resilient. We want to expand the port's reach beyond its current site boundaries and always to continue to be a partner with the community. Now, the strategic master plan has two exhibits in it. One is called initial, which identifies the projects in the first five years to meet those eight goals. Key to that initial projects are the PIDP grant work for realigning the rail yard, giving it more working track, and improvement of the roadway system within the port. As we go into the interim options, this is the five-to-10-year plan. And this is where we look to expanding the port's boundary, expanding up to the north, come seeing the areas between 10th Street and 11th Street. And we become more of a contiguous cargo port to where the areas north of the rail yard are containerized cargo and the areas south of the rail yard are the other types of cargo that move through the port. To give a little more detail on these recommendations, once the containerized cargo growth, we see there's a horizon in their capacity. So expanding the northern boundary gives them additional 18 acres for containerized cargo. This will accommodate a throughput growth up to about 500,000 annual TEU. They're probably looking to be around 250,000 this year. And also to develop the northern boundary of this expansion into a retail storefront and softscape facilities, to be more community-aware and have a better transition from the port's environment into the residential that sits to the north. This will improve the efficiency of the container handling operations to expand and have contiguous container storage areas. It'll improve the efficiency of their ancillary support facilities and provide opportunities for additional onsite warehouse functions that could be leased to potentially new tenants. For the cruise growth in the five-to-10-year timeframe, looking at fixing the parking limitations by developing a cruise terminal parking structure, this will improve existing cruise passenger parking that currently has limited capacity that is close to the terminal. This will generate more profitable parking revenue as well as improve the passenger ingress and egress to the cruise terminal. It also moves the parking lot that's currently used and adds additional three acres for containerized cargo throughput.
What kind of cost is a parking garage?
Parking garage is about $30,000 to $35,000 a slot, a parking slot.
And how many slots in a parking?
Maybe in the, say, the range of 1,000. So... Yeah, 35 million.
I have a question.
Yes.
$35 million for a parking garage? And a parking garage, you just need lights, concrete. It's not like you have to have air conditioning or anything.
You would think.
So I'm pretty sure, I've seen them, I'm no contractor, but I know I've heard of them being much, much less than 30 million dollars. You said 30 million? Yeah.
It'd be 35 million for a 1,000-slot parking garage.
I can see that.
Looking to 30, $35,000 a slot is kind of a general good planning number for a cost of parking garage.
I think we might be able to work that a little bit. You know, this is just my opinion because, I mean, you're only talking about some concrete blocks, flooring, and lights, no air conditioning.
All right.
And two elevators.
It's an open structure.
Two elevators. Just my comment.
So another recommendation is to improve the port connection. This happens over the zero-to-10-year timeframe. Of course, the key to that is to implement PID rail improvements, which are currently underway, adding more storage track to the port. And also in the future, to add more working track to increase the rail yard throughput to around 60,000 annual TEUs. Provide southern rail spurs from the main line into the port and relocate the undocked rail storage track so it makes more efficient movements between the storage track and the working track that don't require you to close down or block the accurate crossings for the roadways. To reduce roadway congestion inside the port, container terminal main gate improvements is a primary way to get there. This increases the number of gate processing lanes, creates a two-stage gate process for entry and exit traffic, so it makes it a lot more efficient. You have upstream data collection and downstream processing, provides the ability to move exceptions out of the normal flow of gate traffic, which increases the processing velocity. And it increases the truck processing capacity and reducing truck queue inside the terminal and prevents it from expanding and congesting traffic outside of the terminal. Also reduce roadway congestion in the zero-to-five, 10-years is to develop a non-containerized cargo gate that relocates the port main security gate to a new western bypass road, kind of shown here in tan in that graphic. It'll separate the entry and exit of the southern tenants' cargo from containerized cargo, separate car traffic from containerized truck traffic, so to increase safety, and it'll reduce internal roadway congestion, and also reduce the congestion that could be seen at the intersection of MLK Boulevards and the current port entrance. Berth utilization will be becoming key over the next years as you continue to grow in the five-to-10-year timeframe. To improve that berth utilization, this construct Berth 18, which is shown as keynote 27 in this diagram. So it's about a 400-foot-long catwalk and more dolphins that extends out. Of course, it will have to be environmental impact studies to evaluate its location and its impact to the water resources in the area, and also may impact the intercoastal waterway path, though that will be looked at as well. But this layberth will reduce the offshore ship queue and allow ships to sit there that don't need landside services, and also provide a future opportunity for dry or liquid bulk loading at this position.
Where is the manatee watch area?
It's kind of between 27 and those two white tanks in that area.
So we could actually, you think it's feasible to put a ship there?
We'd have to look and see what the impacts are with the manatees. That is the big key. It's also there in the ELS as well.
I couldn't foresee us ever putting one there. We would have a problem, especially during the mating season, and we haven't so far because of that.
I mean, this is a recommendation, but we already have protections for the manatees as they come in and dock.
Right. If I could, like the commissioner said, there are protections for the manatees that come in right now. That pier itself would have to be an over-the-water pier, so it wouldn't be what we have current today, like a slip. The over-the-water piers are generally open, so they are open in the front, open in the back, and they allow bypass room during that timeframe for the manatees to go around. They're pretty familiar with going around our ships. They do it on a regular basis out here. But yes, an environmental impact study would have to be included.
So it would be an open structure that allows the flow of water through it?
Continue.
And then a recommendation to improve berth utilization in the five-to-10-year timeframe is to widen Slip 2. It increases Slip 2 to a width of 250 feet, which requires to remove 60 feet on the northern side of it. This will be key as it'll allow simultaneous large vessels to be alongside both the north and the south sides of Slip 2, simply since it's currently not possible. So it'll increase berth availability, although a downside is it does reduce the length of Berth 7. And to accommodate diverse cargo growth and capture, basically, we're looking at shifting general cargo warehouses and associated storage, relocating and showing here in green along the south boundary of the port. We'll provide southern rail spurs off the main line into tenants in there, the dry bulk, liquid bulk, and a general cargo that require connection to the main line. And then east of Sky Pass, looking at providing active cargo storage areas that allow the southern tenants, I say the, southern tenants that are south of the rail yard, to move their cargo and have a staging area that's close to the water side. So the next steps here, we're currently incorporating the comments and the feedback to give you a final deliverable. We're looking at submitting the final master plan in August of 2023. And at that point, then it's turned over to the Palm Beach County for their adoption of the master plan. They'll go through their initial planning review of it, then they'll have a hearing before they submit it to the state of Florida. The state of Florida will come back with their comments. Then it'll go through a public review period with looking at the county adopting it somewhere in December of 2023.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Thank you very much. We appreciate you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Richards?
Mr. Meekins, I have a, we all have a letter here from Mr. Ward. Have you seen it? I'm not going to go into the details.
I have not.
He addresses the master plan committees he has. I just think we should, we should, he's a smart guy, operated a couple of times, he should at least know what's in here.
Absolutely. So with that, we look, we still need a motion to approve the Port of Palm Beach final draft strategic master plan, which provides a recommended blueprint for the port's sustainability and viability over the next 20 years. We can take Mr. Ward's comments as well, and we can incorporate them in with what Kerry is still doing. I believe that period's still open for a couple more days.
Thank you very much. Now, so the motion was by Commissioner Richards, second by Commissioner Poole. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. I four?
Commissioners, I four is a motion to approve the agreement with Train for the Phase Two of the Maritime SMO.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. Come on. I five?
I five is a motion to approve the ratification of the article, the wage increase for the National Association.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. New business, J one?
J one is the Board of Commissioners respectfully requested to adopt the resolution 2023-06 to not levy ad valorem taxes upon the real and personal taxable property of the district for the year 2023.
Motion by Commissioner Richards, second by Commissioner Poole. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. J two?
J two is a request for the board to approve Slate Solutions, Inc., to complete the hardening and refurbishing of the storage, storing of the passenger loading bridge for a total cost not to exceed $600,000.
Which, which, which bridge is this?
So this is the bridge we purchased from Fort Fennell for about $140,000. We had almost $2 million in the grant. What we're doing is hardening it. We're getting it ready for everything it needs, but we are not doing the installation. We won't do the installation until we know what we have for a second vessel, because it costs a lot to install these things, and what we don't want to do is install it and then have to pull it back out. It's a waste of money.
For the preserves, it might hurt.
Absolutely. It gets it set up for what we need.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries five zero. J three?
J three is a motion to approve an amendment to the EC Fennell contract to align with the state of Florida Consultants' Competitive Negotiation Act maximum project values. So if you, we talked about this before, Michael had brought it up, that some of the contracts out there were not even in their dollar amount. EC Fennells was lower. We're just raising that up to meet with everybody else.
Second. I need a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. And Mr. Paret has been around from EC Fennell. You know, he worked on our Chilos years ago when we were, what was the engineering company years ago?
G and Jensen.
G and Jensen. He was with G and Jensen years ago. Yes. And he worked at the port years ago with G and Jensen. So he's been around a long time, and he knows a lot about the port. And so he's with EC Fennell. So he will be continuing the job from what, nearly 20 years ago? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. He has been around that long.
Well, now we'll have a little bit more money to spread around, so.
Yes. Comments from the public? I have, any more? Thank you very much, Mr. Meekin. Comments from the public? I have Ms. Margaret Shepherd. Are you still here? Oh, yes.
She says she can stay in Riviera Beach until midnight. She can see you. Margaret Shepherd, Riviera Beach. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Mr. Chair, and of course, Mr. Poole, my friend, and Blair, and to the young lady. I'm so glad to be back home, being at the port. I've been sick and away, but I bounced back, and I'm here. I'm here today. A lot of them left. We're launching our campaign. As you know, 2024 is coming up, and the city of Riviera Beach, support and commissioners, we have start logging in who we're going to support. Chief Jeffrey Jackson was just here, and that's our support. And of course, Alex Freeman, who's been campaigning for at least 10 years. And of course, Mr. Richard Rouse is here for the commissioners. So those are some of our choices, and we'll be here. We just wanted to give them the opportunity to kind of open up and feel the breeze is coming into the port. Changes in the air. I thank Mr. Richards, who came, planning and zoning. I've been doing planning and zoning 18 years for the city of Riviera Beach, and he knows for a fact we're bringing new and exciting things to the city of Riviera Beach. And I just want to keep that in my mind, the best city to live, work, and play. I also have Ms. Delsa, Brooke Stella Delsa. Delsa is, you take a good look at her. She will be taking Part Two of the Marina. She's building a Part Two, Marina First, and then the second part of the Marina. She will be building a restaurant. We want five-star. I told her I want some tablecloths, napkins, nice plates. If Margaritaville coming, surely we have to put a restaurant that would take care of everybody. She's going to have a diverse food, from vegan, soul food, European, so I'm looking for it. And I want you to really make her welcome, because she has to kind of get around and get to know people building that type of restaurant. Once again, I want to thank you, Madam Chair. I thank you. A lot of people don't know, and I'm going to sit down. It was Jean Enright that started me into this field 40 years ago. And it was times I wanted to give up. I said, Jean, I can't do it. I can't. She said, do it, do it, go get those packets, get the folks, get... And I thank God I did it, because now I can sit at the phone and call and say, are you ready?
But Ms. Shepherd?
I'm ready.
Jean tells us she's not 40, she's 39. How is that possible?
I'm not even off the calendar. I said 40 years ago.
You said four or 40?
40 years ago.
But she tells us she's not even 40.
We go way, way, way back. Anyway, the hair in the states was built, $29.7 million. Chief Jeffrey Jackson is the chair, and we're now getting ready to do some homeless apartments. So we're on the move. We have to get people to take us to the next level. Thanks, thank you again, Dr. Jean Enright, and I appreciate you, as well as mine. I don't know.
After that comment, Mrs. Shepherd, we're always happy to have you at the Port of Palm Beach. of Palm Beach. That is true. You go back. I got her working on ballots and all sorts of things years ago, so, but thank you for coming to the port. You're always welcome. We appreciate you coming. Do we have any comments from our commissioners? Commissioner Badaj, you have a comment?
No.
Commissioner Richards?
Commissioner Sicklin?
No.
Commissioner Poole? Well, I have no comments either. I just thank all of you for enduring this, the heat, low lights and everything else, but we survived. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 21st, at 4:00 P.M.